invocation is going to be given by Mr. Tim Blevins of Light Church.
Let's pray. Father, we come to you today and we are very grateful for this city. We thank you that your hand is upon us. Father, I pray that you will bless the commissioners today and bless this meeting today. We recognize that this is the day that you have made and we will rejoice and be glad in it. I pray for the commissioners to make decisions with godly wisdom that align our county under biblical principles of righteousness, stewardship, and leadership, and fairness for all. I pray for the commissioners to be led by your spirit today as they make important decisions that affect the lives of us residents. And God, I pray that you have blessed New Hanover County, its leaders, employees, and all those who make this county great. I declare by faith that the best is yet to come for our county. I pray this all in the wonderful name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the consensus of Mr. Zeppl.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull, uh, thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to pull number three and number five for some quick clarification. Um, and with that, I'd like to make a motion to pass one, two, and four. If there's a second.
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 All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, number three, um, is budget amendments. Uh, I was looking at BA twenty-five dash zero-one-six, the port security grant. I think, hey, John.
Hey, how are you?
Yeah. Just a quick question. Uh, I want to see if I read this right. It looks like thirty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Great idea for radios.
They're marine radios for the marine units in the boats. Yes.
Seem like a lot. Are these really special radios?
Uh, the weather, weatherproofing of the, of the radios really up the cost of them. Yes.
I see. These will actually go on the?
On the boats.
On the boats.
Yes, sir.
So I wanted to seem like a lot of money for four radios, but you're honored as always. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Uh, and number five, um, I just wanted to pull this for a second to put a spotlight on it. Eric, I see you there. Oh, no. Hey, Kate.
Hello there.
Um, and just also for those of you who are listening at home and here, that are here, uh, to draw attention to this fantastic situation of opportunity. It's a two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars for the IMLS, the Institute of Museum and Library Services Grant. Uh, this is kind of like a forward-looking, it's a preview of what's going to be happening at, at Project Grace. If I read this right, that we're going to have interactive elements. This is what this is going to pay for, featuring an underwater robot exploration, surfboard design, fiber optic communication, renewable energy, properties of light, air, and water, electricity, and magnetism, and building structures.
Absolutely.
These will all be parts of the exhibits that'll be happening at our new museum, you know, half a block from here.
Yes, we're very excited.
Wonderful. This is all your handiwork, I'm sure, Kate, or you and your staff. Yeah.
Yes.
Is there anything you'd like to add to it? I just really wanted to, you know, get everybody excited about it. This is truly cool.
So yes, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to apply for this grant. Um, it will go in on November thirteenth. It requires matching funds. The funds are already matched through the project, project funds. So that's all taken care of. And yes, we've been partnering with different industries within the community to help us develop these interactives so that people can really have a hands-on experience and learn about some of the things that are happening in our community.
And these are all exhibits we do not currently have at our museum, right?
Correct, yeah.
Great stuff. We'll look more, uh, forward to seeing and hearing more about this, Kate.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Just wanted to put a spotlight on that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your patience. And with that, I make a motion to approve number three and number five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, we'll do the, uh, presentation of the service awards and welcome our new people.
Good morning. Always an honor to be with you. We have the, the privilege of, of recognizing a retiree this morning. This is an extra special retiree, but we're also going to recognize a number of employees that have reached significant milestones in their service to our community and also welcome some wonderful new people who have joined the team since the board was last together. But I'd like to begin with our retirement this morning that we're going to recognize and invite for this fellow, please come forward, if you don't mind. Brenda, congratulations. Would you do the honor of standing next to me? This is your life. Exactly. Brenda is retiring after forty-two years of service to New Hanover County. Somebody lead a round of applause for that. God. So to put a little context around that, that's nineteen-hundred-and-eighty-two. Brenda started her service to New Hanover County. And what a forty-two years of service it's been. If you'll do me the honor of allowing me to read. Brenda is retiring after forty-two years of dedicated public service with New Hanover County. Brenda began her career in the tax department where she has continually demonstrated exceptional skills and expertise, beginning with the tax department, ending in the tax department. Over the years, she's had several key roles, including personal and business property appraiser, administrative coordinator overseeing the department's information center, and culminating in her current role as the administrative supervisor. Known as a fireball, Brenda's energy and commitment are widely admired. Her supervisor notes that her passion for working with the public is evident. She's consistently demonstrated a deep dedication to both customer service and her tax department colleagues. Throughout her career, Brenda has been celebrated for her respect, her integrity, and her unwavering commitment to excellence and to New Hanover County's shared values. She's been honored with awards recognizing her strong work ethic and her embodiment of those shared values. While Brenda's presence will be greatly missed, her colleagues are excited for her as she begins the next chapter. She now has time to pursue her love of travel and playing golf with her husband, Mark. Forty-two years of incredible service can never replace, Brenda wouldn't even try and replace it. We just hope we're half as good as hiring people like Brenda to join the organization. What, uh, what an honor. Thank you for your service to our community. We're, we're better because of you. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. Brenda, again, congratulate, thank you. It, it, I said it, beginning and ending in the tax office, not the, the easiest of offices to work in, but always respectful, um, and did an outstanding job for New Hanover County. Brenda, congratulations and thank you. So we're going to recognize folks that have reached important milestones. No one with forty-two years of service, but we are at the end going to recognize someone who's had a full career, which is thirty years, but is still, just like Brenda did, coming every day after that thirtieth year to support our community. So first is five-year service awards. When I call your name, if you would please come up, um, I'd like to be the first to and then invite you to visit with the board. And this morning, our first five-year service award is in the tax office. Michelle, congratulations. Also with five years of service this morning, we're going to recognize Tanisha Ferrier in the Department of Social Services. Congratulations, Tanisha. Thank you for what you do. This morning, we also have the pleasure of recognizing Machida Murphy, Machida Murphy from Parks and Gardens. Congratulations. This morning, with five years of service, we're also going to recognize Nick Rivas, Facilities Management. Nick, congratulations.
Thank you.
Also with five years of service this morning, we're going to recognize Samantha Speaker in the Register of Deeds. Samantha, congratulations and thank you. Commissioners, we're going to move forward this morning and recognize several people that have reached ten years of service. And it's an honor this morning to first recognize Angela English, also in the Register of Deeds Office. Congratulations and thank you. Years of service, we're going to recognize Joelle Scholler, Department of Social Services. Joelle, congratulations and thank you. Also an honor to recognize with ten years of service Bradley Schrader, Community Justice Services. Congratulations. Thank you for what you do. Commissioners, we're going to recognize this morning someone with fifteen years of service to New Hanover County. And it's an honor to recognize Leslie Sampson, the Department of Social Services. Congratulations, Leslie. Thank you. Commissioners, we're going to move forward to twenty-five years of service to New Hanover County. And the first person that I'm honored to recognize this morning is Greg, Facilities Management. Greg, thank you for what you do. Commissioners, this morning, it's also an honor to recognize with twenty-five years of service Chief Deputy Jonathan Hart. Chief, congratulate. Our next recognition this morning, and this, this is not a retirement, and I'm so thankful to say not a retirement, but thirty years of recognition. It's an honor to call on Judy Peacock in the sheriff's office. Congratulations and thank you. Commissioners, whether it's five years or thirty years like Judy, the, these are the, the best and the brightest doing work on behalf of the board. I wish you'd leave us another round of applause. Thank you. So we are going to recognize some folks that have joined the team since the board last met. And when I call your name, if you would, please stand up. We want to give you a, a nice warm welcome to New Hanover County and, and offer you the, the same opportunity that every person that you just saw and met this morning. You have that same opportunity to, to contribute in unmeasurable ways to our community. And if you want to model how to be successful, look to someone like Brenda Stella who did it for forty-two years and has left a legacy. So thank you for coming to work with us. Congratulations, Brenda, because it's not easy to be hired into New Hanover County. We attract deep, talented applicant pools. That's not up for debate. But what we've changed our hiring managers to do, because you're smart and capable, is differentiate who is actually committed and passionate about public service, because that's what it takes to be here for forty-two years and be successful. So again, thank you for being here. We look forward to introducing our new employees. And the first this morning is Diego Amarocho in public, as a public health nurse. Diego, welcome. Emma Carey, a health educator, also in public health. Emma, thank you. Next this morning, we're going to recognize Wendy Goodman, working in Cooperative Extension as an administrative technician. Wendy, thank you for coming to work with us. Amanda Lauria, Public Health, Public Health Nurse Supervisor. Amanda, thank you for coming to work. A return trip, Jay Stokely, Building Safety Plans Examiner. Jay, welcome back. Cinqueta Tyndall, Community Justice Services. Good morning, Cinqueta. Thank you for joining us. And then last but least, Madeline Wampler, County Manager's Office, our Sustainability Manager. Madeline, thank you for coming to work with us. So commissioners, that concludes retirements, service awards, and new hires. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're fortunate to have today some members of our finance department. This is our financial reporting team. They are the best at what they do. They are absolute experts. We've got Maria Stanfest, Beverly Thomas, Teresa Hewitt, and they're led by their leader Martha Wayne, our deputy CFO. Today, we'd like to bring your attention, under Martha's leadership, this team has received the highest award in government accounting standards. It's from the Government Finance Officers Association, and it's an award for the fiscal year 2023 financial report. And they were awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence, which is the highest form of recognition. In their words, by, in their, in their words, by receiving this designation, this designation, the county's financial report was found to demonstrate a constructive spirit of full disclosure and to clearly communicate the county's financial story and motivate potential users to read the report. Martha and her team ensures that our taxpayers' thoughts are properly accounted for and reported with the highest level of transparency. Please join me in congratulating Martha, Teresa, Maria, and Beverly on this outstanding recognition. Now, for one difficult, um, Martha's going to leave the county. She's leaving soon. Um, she's been a tremendous asset to the county. Always look up to her, use her as a resource, love her. Um, she's been a great friend to me while I've been at the county, both professionally and personally. So she's got a great opportunity. She's not ready to exactly announce what that opportunity is. That'll be soon. But anyways, this was a great time to recognize her and congratulate her on her eight years of the county. And just let her know that we miss her and we wish the best for her. So I would hope you could give me one more round of applause.
Any of you commissioners have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, where are you going, Martha? Oh, no, I see. Well, Martha, also, um, how many years have you been a part of the finance department that has won this award?
Uh, eight years. I've been with the county eight years in July.
Thank you so much. How have we won this award? Eric, do you remember?
Either forty-two or forty-three, I believe.
Yeah, I think it's forty-three.
And they don't take it for granted. They work hard on every aspect of that report, and it is a great piece of work. They do a great job.
Great. Congratulations.
Thank you. If I just might say, thank you all so much for your, that's a tough job that you have, and you've excelled at it. So I just want to say thank you. Appreciate you.
Ms. Chair, looking back to people like Bruchel, who was our finance director at one point in time, became county manager, and after finance director, became assistant county manager, to Lisa Worksbacher, who was our finance director, became assistant county manager. There's a pattern here of folks that work in this department, that leave, that excel and do greater things. And just want to thank you all for the past forty-three years of making our county one of the bright shining stars within the state and, and the country as well. Not only the fact that we have two AAA bond ratings, and those things are attributed to some of the great work that you all do as well, so can't say enough. Martha, uh, although we had a retirement today, I thought we had a moratorium on people just leaving because they want to leave. But thank you for all you've done for our community and succeed.
Yeah, let's get a picture made. I'd like to invite Hannah McCoy up to the podium.
Hi, good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Lauren. Good to see you again as well. Hannah.
Nice to meet you.
You're here today to, for a proclamation, uh, on the Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. I'd like to read it, then we'll give you an opportunity, uh, first we'll vote on it, and I think it'll pass. And, uh, then you'll have a chance, opportunity to say a few words and we'll take a photo as well. Domestic Violence Awareness Month proclamation. Whereas domestic violence transcends all ethnic, racial, gender, and socioeconomic boundaries weakening the very core of our community. And whereas the effects of domestic violence are far-reaching and may have lifetime implications for families, the criminal justice system, and our community. Whereas Domestic Violence Shelter and Services Incorporated provides emergency crisis intervention, ongoing support, and services in New Hanover County for victims and survivors of domestic abuse. And whereas one thousand three hundred and forty-nine adults and two hundred and forty-seven children receive direct services, including court accompaniment, advocacy, empowerment groups, and counseling. And one hundred and twenty-seven adults and ninety-eight children received emergency shelter through Domestic Violence Shelter and Services Incorporated in the year 2023. And whereas on September fourth, two thousand two, Gladys Bryant, an employee of New Hanover County for more than two decades, and on August sixth, two thousand eight, Tarika Pulliam, an employee of New Hanover County for two years, lost their lives in acts of domestic violence, reminding their coworkers and friends of the prevalence and devastating consequences of domestic violence. And whereas many other individuals throughout New Hanover County and the United States find themselves in abusive relationships and need a safe and empowering environment. And whereas this year's theme, planting the seed, serves as to call, serves as a call to action for the citizens of New Hanover County to uplift the autonomy and strength of survivors and to encourage one another to live lives free from violence. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners is committed to addressing domestic violence in all its forms, creating a community that upholds strong values, fosters safe and loving homes for all families, and encourages citizens to work together to prevent and eliminate domestic violence. The board further proclaims October twenty-four as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in New Hanover County. Adopted this twenty-first day of October, 2024, William C., William, excuse me, E. Rivenbar, Chair.
Hannah, would you like to say a few words?
I just want to say thank you for allowing us to be here today and thank you for continuously supporting the work that our agency does. I know we've been here in the county for quite some time and we I know we've been here in the county for quite some time, and we just have to say thank you. It takes a village to do violence prevention. It takes a village to heal some of the wounds that domestic violence has caused within our community, and we're very thankful for our village.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just want to thank you all on behalf of our citizens here for the great work that you all are doing, providing safe harbor for not just the women, but also the children. Every now and then, you also have men who are also abused as well, and don't want that to be an oversight, that the folks recognize that everyone has the ability to be abused by a partner or a loved one. Many moons ago, my wife served on your board for six years, and I saw the diligence that she had there with the other board members and the staff, and providing that safe harbor that's so needed, and bringing folks in from other communities, and they're trying to escape violence and start a new life. It can be terrifying for that person, but when you have someone that has compassion and hope and love, but it makes that transition and journey a whole lot easier. So thank you all for your commitment to the folks in our community that experience this.
Thank you.
Ms. Chair, first off, thank you again for all the work that you do, and I know you do it quite kind of below the radar, as they would say. But I also understand that, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, you provide the only emergency sheltering for victims of domestic abuse. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The only ones here in New Hanover County. That's an amazing responsibility, and we thank you for all the victims whose names we will never see or hear, and the services and what you see and deal with every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I move the proclamation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next is Consideration of National Substance Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. Mr. David Wood and Jody Walker. How you doing?
Well, thank you all for being here today. You know, this is an issue that's definitely near and dear to my heart, as our community has become, at one point in time, the overdose capital of the country. And I'm thankful that our county, in particular, partnered to build the healing place, to help provide respite, but also for healing for those folks that are experiencing substance use disorder. And as I read this proclamation, New Hanover County Board of Commissioners, National Substance Abuse Prevention Month proclamation. Whereas data indicates that in 2022, there were a record number of North Carolinians who died from drug overdoses in averages of twelve per day, or 41.9 per 100,000 population. And whereas 2018 through 2022, there was a 97% increase in the rate of overdose deaths in rural communities in North Carolina. And whereas data suggests that in 2022, 90% of overdose deaths in North Carolina were unintentional. And whereas data estimates that there were 7,714,521 drug-led emergency department ED visits in the U.S. in 2022. In 2023, in North Carolina, there was an estimated 171 emergency department visits related to drug overdoses. And whereas the loss of quality of life and the statistical value of death accounted for 84% of the total cost of substance use disorder and related overdose deaths in the U.S. Whereas comprehensive and community-based prevention efforts that incorporate culturally responsive actions to address disparities in drug overdose deaths and the inequities that contribute to them are. And whereas we must prevent future addiction and address trauma by supporting children and families, increasing access to treatment and related support, and enhancing education awareness. And whereas we commit to remembering those who have lost their lives to substance abuse, to acknowledging those in recovery, and to supporting the children, parents, family, and friends touched by substance abuse. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that October 2024 will be recognized as National Substance Abuse Prevention Month in New Hanover County, adopted this 21st day of October, 2024, William Rivenberg Chair. Ms. Chair, I move approval of the proclamation as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Good morning. My name is Dave Wood, and I'm a crisis clinician with the 911 Care Team. In our work, we have a considerable opportunity to interact with those who are in crisis in real time. Many of those that we talk with have some type of substance use problems, such as addiction, overdose, or quality of life issues that have reached a crisis level. And since the onset of the Care Team program in November of 2023, we have been able to assist and support over 1,400 individuals in our community. I want to take this opportunity to thank you on the behalf of the Care Team program and the community that we serve. New Hanover County's dedication to making a positive impact, reducing the problems associated with substance use and the disparities associated with substance is so very much appreciated. It is the dedication and focus of our leaders and decision-makers that will result in the decreasing the devastating consequences of substances in our community, and to build resilience in our residents and those we serve. Again, thank you for all that you do, and all that you've helped us to do for the citizens of this county.
Thank you, sir. Can you get a picture? Okay, next is Consideration of Breast Cancer Awareness Month proclamation. Ms. Carla Turner.
Mr. Chair, I'll read that proclamation. Whereas in 2024, a staggering 12,724 women residing in North Carolina are expected to receive the daunting diagnosis of breast cancer, with the prediction of 1,544 lives lost to this devastating disease. And whereas women in North Carolina face a 1 in 8 lifetime risk of developing breast cancer, marking it as the second-leading cause of cancer-related deaths among women in the United States. And whereas the impact of breast cancer is notably higher among Black women compared to white women, and the driving factors including disparities in income, education, and access to healthcare services, underscoring the critical need for enhanced breast cancer screening and early detection innovations. And whereas detection of breast cancer is crucial to improving survival rates and can be achieved through regular mammogram screenings and follow-up testing, as indicated, enabling prompt and effective treatment that can ultimately save lives. And adopting a healthy lifestyle that includes physical activity, maintaining a healthy weight, and limiting alcohol consumption may help reduce the risk of developing breast cancer. And whereas in North Carolina, Breast and Cervical Cancer Control Program, BCCP, steadfastly extends free or low-cost breast and cervical cancer screening, along with necessary follow-up care to eligible uninsured and underinsured women. And whereas awareness, health information, educational resources, treatment options, and support network empowers individuals grappling with breast cancer to seek and receive appropriate care and resources essential for enhancing their overall quality of life. And whereas community organizations, healthcare providers, and business can play a pivotal role in supporting and encouraging women in prioritization, breast health, and obtain necessary screenings. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by New Hanover County Board of Commissioners that October 2024 will be recognized as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in New Hanover County, and in doing so, encourages all women to obtain regular health screenings to promote an early detection of breast cancer. Adopted this 21st day of October, 2024, William E. Rivenberg Chair.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you so much to the Commissioners and the county for your ongoing support of our efforts in public health. And just to share a little bit of information about our BSEP program. For fiscal year '24, we had an expanded target of 70 women. Expanded target means we had a lower target in July that the state wanted us to hit, and as the year goes on, if other counties aren't meeting their goal, the state will shift money around and ask counties that are on target to see more women. So we met our, we did our 70th client in May of this year. And for this fiscal year '25, we started off with a target of 60, and the state called us last week and said, could we move that to 75, which we gladly accepted. So we are on target to see at least 75 women in this program this year, and to date, we've seen 41. So thank you for your support of our efforts.
Thank you. Is there a motion to?
So move, Ms. Chair.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Next is Consideration of Resolution for Supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans, and I believe Ms. Betsy Graham is going to come speak to us.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I believe that I had the honor to read this proclamation last year, and my family participated in Operation Green Light at our home. The New Hanover County Board of Commissioners Resolution Supporting Operation Green Light for Veterans. Whereas the residents of New Hanover County have great respect, admiration, and the utmost gratitude for all of the men and women who have selflessly served our country and this community and the armed forces. And whereas the contributions and sacrifices of the men and women who served in the armed forces have been vital in maintaining the freedoms and way of life enjoyed by our citizens. And whereas, New Hanover County seeks to honor these individuals who have paid the high price for freedom by placing themselves in harm's way for the good of all. And whereas, veterans continue to serve our community in veteran service organizations, religious groups, civil service, and with other local organizations to support fellow former service members. And whereas, there are more than 15,000 veterans in New Hanover County, and through comprehensive benefits, counseling, claim development, and community outreach, New Hanover County Veteran Services assist an average of 2,000 veterans and eligible family members to obtain, retain, and increase benefits they are entitled to through the Department of Veterans Affairs and other agencies each year. And whereas, approximately 200,000 service members transition to civilian communities annually, and an estimated 20% increase of all service members will transition to civilian life in the near future. And whereas, studies indicate that 44% to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during the transition from military to civilian life, and are at high risk for suicide during their first year after the military. And whereas, New Hanover County appreciates the sacrifices of our United States military personnel and believes specific recognition should be granted. And whereas, New Hanover County Veteran Services is proud to support veterans and family members, and will recognize Operation Green Light for Veterans by lighting the Health and Human Services Building and Senior Resource Center in green to let veterans know they are seen, appreciated, and supported. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the New Hanover County Board of Commissioners hereby declares from now through November 15th, 2024, a time to salute and honor the service and sacrifice of our veterans. And be it further resolved that in observance of Operation Green Light, New Hanover County encourages its citizens to recognize the importance of honoring all who have made immeasurable sacrifices, to preserve freedom by displaying a green light in a window of their place of business or residence from November 4th through November 15th. Adopted this 21st day of October, 2024, New Hanover County, Bill Rivenberg Chair. Thank you, ma'am. Please speak to the important issue.
Yes, thank you all for considering this resolution and participating in this year. Also, facilities and communications, as they also help with this initiative. We really want to encourage everyone to have their lights out, to just show that support of veterans and remind them that there is help out there. Their resources, even if you are not eligible for VA resources, the county has many things. We have a rich veteran community that also steps in in those gaps. So we really encourage everyone to participate in this. It's a privilege to be in the position that we're in, where Veterans Day is every day, and we get to see the impact of these benefits for those and the family members. But this green light is just really showing for everyone, the veterans, that took this oath, that we appreciate them, the awareness, and that we are here for them through all transitions of life, whether it's you just recently discharged, or you get that significant life-changing diagnosis from toxic exposure later in life. So we really think it's important that everyone's aware of this community effort. And I also want to say that this week is Veterans Buddy Check-In. So I encourage veterans to check in on your fellow veterans, see how they're doing. And I also challenge non-veterans to call. We all know veterans in our families, in our communities, to see how they're doing, are they connected to their benefits, and how we can best support them.
Thank you very much. I move the proclamation, Mr. Chair.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ms. Chair, I want to make a couple of comments. Betsy Graham, sometime I want to call you Betsy Ross. Because you mean the best to me and this community with the work and the services you provide for the veterans here. You know, being a Navy veteran myself, my sister served in the Navy for 10 years. I think I was an influence on her joining the Navy, and she came out with a top-secret clearance based on her service and information systems. You know, seeing the sacrifices that so many have made in our community, serving our community, serving our country, to me, it's important that, you know, people recognize that sacrifice. And it's not just a person that's serving in armed forces, but also the family members that are serving with them, as a husband or a wife may be deployed somewhere, but that spouse is back home trying to take care of the family, in some cases, the children as well, and it's definitely. Want to thank all those folks that have served our country in so many great ways. And it's great to see stores like Home Depot and Lowe's, you know, on a regular basis, offering 10% discounts to veterans in our community. And for me, I take advantage of those things. And one of the highlights of my life is looking at my driver's license and seeing a word veteran on there. Recognize those sacrifices as well. So thank you for all that your staff does. I know you all have been able to bring in valuable financial resources to our veterans, help them connect with benefits that will take care of themselves and their families for years to come. So again, thank you, Ms. Betsy Graham Ross.
Next is New Hanover County Commission for Women up the presentation, Ms. Sheila Evans.
Good morning. The best news I heard this morning is that people helped me with my PowerPoint. Honestly, this is the second one I've ever done. The first one was last year for this event. So that was great news this morning. Just some updates on the Commission since last year. We do have three subcommittees that are in the bylaws. We decided to take a pause on those and concentrate everyone working together on the general committee. We also kind of took a pause on speakers. We did have two. We developed a close partnership with Shamika Kemp. She's with the Junior League of Wilmington. And Holly Jones from the Department of Justice reached out to us to spread the news about the update that they eliminated the backlog. Am I supposed to do that? See? Technology. Not my thing. Holly Jones, she gave us an update on the elimination of the backlog of the sexual assault kits. They've all been tested. I think the most important thing that we are supposed to be doing for the city and the county is our poll survey. We created an ad hoc committee to update the survey. We found as we went through year one, we were missing a couple little things, and we wanted, we put the committee together. It took some time, and we updated it. Actually, it just got translated into Spanish last night. I don't know if Haley's here. I don't see her, but she was going to try to come along. But she actually did the translation, and the county, Mari, will help us take a good look at that. Here's a picture from, we like to attend events and take that survey with us. Kind of almost bully people into, two minutes, five questions, that's it. It's not long. But no, in a friendly way, we chase people down and try to get them. So I took the survey, and Olivia on the left, my left, is. So I took the survey, and Olivia on the left, my left, is, she was hosting the event, Safe Place gave the presentation in January. Then we attended the Heart of the Matter luncheon. Commissioner Zappel, I think you sat at our table. There was enough of us that became table hosts. So always happy to attend those kind of things and represent the commission. Then we move on to Women's History Month. This was a Saturday event, attended by five out of eleven of us, so that was pretty good. And Linda joined in the fun. We took on a project in collaboration with the Junior League. We called it a period product project. We felt there was no better way to honor women than helping to collect and donate items that they need. They eventually were channeled through the North Carolina Diaper Bank with the goal of ending up in New Hanover County schools. This was my first attempt at Canva. I created this myself. I was quite pleased, it's colorful, but I actually did succeed with that. We had drop-offs at the YWCA, the Girl Scout Office, Moxy, and the Junior League Office. April brought us to the YWCA Maternal Health Summit in April of two thousand twenty-four. You can see Bridgette with the beige sweater, she stayed all day, and Haley and Lindy took turns attending that event. Again, our survey's there, we're just trying to collect our organic information from people on what they think is important to women. This, I think, is my favorite thing. So I'm going to say it was twenty-one or twenty-two, forgive me for not knowing exactly. One of our guest speakers was a Girl Scout, and her project was trying to, well, it was on the dangers of balloon release. She wanted us to try to come up with a law, an ordinance, whatever, to keep it from happening in New Hanover County. When that became probably not something that we could do, we had a pause. There was a change in staff, I believe, but we came up with an educational campaign. And what I love about this is this young girl, this was her project, it happened, it didn't happen right away, it maybe took two years, but with help from the county, we have our own, here's the, I didn't put the whole thing on, it's actually a video, and I took some screenshots of these. And they, they participated, and they, they shot the video in May, and they got to be a part of it. I also liked the next slide, where they come up with ideas of what you can do in lieu of releasing balloons that create danger. So flying kites, that kind of thing. Six of the eleven of us attended in person the North Carolina Council for the Women's Conference. I believe it was August twenty-eighth. They traveled to Raleigh and gathered with women, and spent the full day in workshops. We brought a lot, they brought a lot of ideas back for us. In fact, I think March twenty-twenty-five, we're going to try to support our own luncheon here locally. This one is out of turn, that was August, this is May. But Linda's office decided to get the four of us together that are housed under her office, the African-American History Heritage and Cultural Commission, the Hispanic-Latino Commission, and the Communities Rela, Community Relations Advisory Commission. We all met for a meeting. We did have quite an extensive presentation from Ray Hunter Havens about the changes with the board of elections and that kind of thing, so that was extremely informative. But it was really fun to be with those other commissions and learn what they're doing. So we each just took a couple minutes and gave each other highlights about what we're working on. This is just from, I guess, last week or so, at the Med Week Luncheon. We did not have a table. As I said, we're updating our survey, and while it's the most important thing that I think we do, it was not ready in Spanish yet, so we decided not to do the table. But four of us did attend the luncheon. I do want to thank, we have these rack cards, you can see it there, but it's this size. Lauren McConville and the rest of the folks on our team helped us with that. And they were very patient, because they originally made it two pieces, and our group wanted it to be three, and they did it. And our objective is that this is always going to be the same. We will change when we update that survey. We have a QR code. We tried it ourselves twice, but I want to thank Travis Corpin for providing us with the permanent one that won't change. In other words, we can go in and update the survey, but the QR code never needs to change, so I'm grateful for that. That is all I have for today, unless anybody has questions.
Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Sheila, thank you for that, that update.
Absolutely.
And you remain to have the coolest logo of any commission or committee.
I agree completely.
Congratulations on that again, and on your rack card, and on your presentation today. You did a beautiful job of that. But also, I just wanted to draw the commission's attention, and the people who are here and who are listening to this, to the incredible work that you do, you, Sheila Evans, does throughout our entire community. You've been doing it for a long time. I won't put a number to it, but it's a very long time that I know. And I, I thank you for all you do, and I had the opportunity to watch you at work over in court, at our judicial system. It was truly amazing. I would encourage any of our commissioners who are over there to, to just sit and watch. Don't say anything, just watch. It is like a choreographed scene that moves only efficiently and swiftly because of your efforts, Sheila. You run that place with incredible efficiency, and I thank you, and everybody who goes through that system is thankful of it, whether they say so or not. Also wanted to point out that you are one of the most recent recipients of the Order of the Longleaf Pine. It's the highest civilian honor. The highest civilian honor in the state of North Carolina, and it's incredibly well-deserved.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
So thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Chair, if I might say, I agree on the logo, I was thinking the same thing, so, and that's what happens when you get a group of women together, they come up with wonderful things. But I wanted to commend you on bringing in the Girl Scouts. I actually know the young lady in, in the photo, and she has gone on to do wonderful things. And, and when you bring in those younger groups like the Girl Scouts and different organizations, they grow up to be very strong ladies. So I appreciate you bringing them in on that with your committee.
Well, Debbie Todd, who serves on the commission, does work for Girl Scouts. But I just love the fact that we thought it was dead. The whole project was going to be dead, we couldn't come up with an ordinance, and I get all that. But then the county reached out, and they're like, we can do an education project. And then, how cool is it that they were shooting their own video in May? And it, it was just a really great thing.
Also, I want to thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, approval of New Hanover County Stabilization and Reentry Star Center renovation, consent to award construction contract to Thomas Construction Group. Miss Tufana, ready?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Commissioners. So I would like to provide you a brief background on where we, how we got to today, to approve this, or request for your approval of this construction contract. So, the Harbor of Facility-Based Crisis and Detoxification Center final day for new admissions was Friday, April twenty-third, two thousand twenty. And it closed its doors on April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. This closure left a gap in our community, and need for non-hospital crisis stabilization and detox services for individuals needing these services. In March two thousand twenty-one, I met with Frankie Roberts, the Director of Lincoln Incorporated, as well as with RHA and the Harbor, including the Harbor Director, Brian Minge, and that began conversations that led to this partnership. The partnership is between the county, Link, and RHA. And between these conversations over the past three years, we've also added our friends and partners with Trillium to assist in funding the facility. Our partners are here today, they withstand. Today's presentation is a culmination of the work over the past three years. So now I'll turn it over to Sarah and Kevin for them to provide more details. And if you have any questions of our partners, they're here to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may, Tufana.
Yes.
Could you allow the partners to identify themselves?
Yes.
So we know who they are.
Cecilia Pierce, Southern Regional Vice President with Trillium Health Resources.
Good morning. Cindy Ellers, Chief Operations Officer for Trillium.
I'm Sarah Huffman, Vice President of Behavioral Health for RUJ.
My name is Michelle Gunn, and I am Link's Deputy Director, Lincoln Incorporated.
Great. Thank you. Thank you all for making the trip down here, too.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Casey with Facilities Management, Facilities Project Manager for this project. A little over a year ago, we started design with LS-3P. And since then, we've come up with a really good plan, and I'm excited that for the first time in about three years, this one came in within budget. So, but before we get too far along, I wanted to share a few facts about the building. This is the rendering of the building. It's located at sixteen oh five Robin Hood Road, right across from the Burger King. Right now, it doesn't look this nice, but we are accepting the challenge to make it look as close to this as possible. Here's the floor plan. The floor plan is a fourteen thousand one hundred square foot pre-engineered metal building that was built in nineteen eighty-two by Ray Sand Builders. Back in that time, that was the, the way most buildings were constructed on the commercial side. What we're going to do for this facility is we're going to renovate the entire facility while maintaining the existing footprint. There were a lot of code reasons we needed to do that, setbacks and things like that, and there is a floodway in the corner of the property. But anyway, we went through the design and came up with the left side, which is a little over six thousand square feet, will house RHA, medically assisted treatment. And the right side, which is the remaining portion of the fourteen thousand, is going to house the kitchen and Link's facilities. A few facts about the building. It used to be a nursing home, and it's a, we're adding a sprinkler system. All the major systems are being replaced, and again, we're, we're staying with the existing footprint. We're asking today for the award of construction contract to Thomas Construction Group in the amount of four thousand, I mean, four million, two eighty-four. So the, the current schedule is if we award the construction contract today, the construction should start in November, with a construction completion in October of two thousand twenty-five. We, we estimate final completion and furniture delivery in November of two thousand twenty-five, and the facility open and operational in early two thousand twenty-six. So the, the existing budget set for the whole project was seven million, seven hundred fifty thousand. Our construction came in at four million, two eighty-four on bid day. And then you see the breakdown. We have miscellaneous contracts and permits and fees, design, consulting, and even the purchase of the property is included in that fund. The funding side of this, I really can't speak too, too much, but you can see the general fund committed one million, six fifty. OSBM grant, three million, seven hundred thousand. And Trillium Health Resources contributed one million, five hundred thousand. And Link Incorporated is contributing nine hundred thousand. So with all that being said, I would like to request that y'all approve the award of construction contract to Thomas Construction Group.
Any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I want to thank you for the work that you all have been doing to get this project to this point. To me, it takes so long to get to this point. It takes even longer to get a building built. But I know that when it's done, it will be built as a purpose-built building, or repurposed-built building, that will serve the needs of those that need detox facilities, as well as those that are needing reentry services in, in housing that have been previously incarcerated. You know, I guess I touched this project myself a long time ago, talking with Frankie, and we took a look at that building and recognized the possibilities of what could be. And even going through the rezoning with the city, it's amazing how our community sometimes does not want certain things in certain places, but those places are meant to help better the entire community. And I'm so thankful that the City Council approved the rezoning of the property, and that we're going down the road that we're going now. And eventually, lives will continue to be saved. They are recognizing when the harbor closed down, it left a tremendous void for a detox facility in our community. Folks were used to going there and having that resource here, and I think the closest one was Jacksonville, to have, as a wet detox. And it really was a disservice to our community to not have that facility. It was great when organizations can come together, put their minds together, and the resources together, and collaborate to provide resources that span the whole breadth of, of, of individuals in our community. And again, it takes the brain of Kevin Casey to come in and, and help facilitate those things, and, and pull it all together. So again, I want to thank you for being a project lead on another project in our community. And I'm looking forward to, you know, having a ribbon cutting, and, and again, seeing lives changed and saved forever as we open the doors in two thousand twenty-six.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Kevin, it, it always frightens me a little bit when I see you show up at these morning meetings. My thought is always, oh my God, Kevin's going to retire. I cannot, I hope that day never comes. You've done such incredible work in the partnership you have with Sarah. You are on a tremendous roll, you know, here in our county, in doing great work in providing the facilities throughout the entire county. You're doing wonderful work, and this is another example of it. I did have a couple of questions, if you're open to that at this point.
Yes, sir.
Could you tell me the discussion around having shared bathrooms, I know this is in the weeds, in the detox portion of it? I know it's a really sensitive part of a person's life and that they're going through. Was there any thinking or discussion around that?
I believe there was. We're going back quite a ways on that, but on both sides of the facility, it was determined, you know, we were trying to take advantage of the current locations of all the plumbing, because the, the plumbing main drain was one of the few items that was in great shape. We had it cambered and checked out. So we were trying to minimize the slab cuts and relocation of plumbing, addition of plumbing. So we went through that exercise, and of course, with, with our partners, RHA and Link, we discussed the different options of how to lay this thing out. And there's a lot of security concerns, you know, with people harming themselves that were factored into that decision. But that was the decision that was made by the group.
Okay, and at the end, RHA was comfortable with this. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, you took a look at it. Appreciate it. Also, I noticed on the, on the bid sheet, kind of an interesting thing, if you could add some context to it, that the winning contractor, Thomas, had a zero amount for the unit cost allowance, which struck me as unusual. That's, well, could you explain why the other two winners had substantial numbers that, that were in that? You see that, the, the allowance number two?
Yeah, the, the unit cost allowance, allowance number two. Okay, so, and these are not factored in, they're, they're, they're including everything instead of having an allowance for each unit. So I feel comfortable with it, because we are carrying contingencies that will cover any changes or unforeseen conditions. I think we did a very thorough job of vetting what the existing conditions are. We've, we've had the roof inspected and the exterior inspected by SKA Consultants. We've cambered all the plumbing. And, and I really don't think there's a whole lot, it's a pre-engineered metal building. There's, there's not a whole lot that I don't think we've already discovered.
You believe that they have built into their, their large number this contingency, which is essentially what this is. It's a, it's a contingency number, even though it's got a different title as a, a unit cost. It allows them that.
And so if that unit cost comes up as a change order request, they've already said it was zero.
That'll be a difficult discussion, yes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Kevin. That, that's all I had. Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you for your patience.
Is there a motion to approve the award?
So moved.
Thomas Construction.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, this is committee appointments. First one is New Hanover County Adult Care and Community Advisory Committee. Al Sharp.
Second, or?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Mr. Chair, can I just add a little something to this? And again, taking advantage of the fact that we have people watching this. These adult care committees, which we are appointing two today, have a, I don't know what the answer is. We have ten vacancies on this committee that I believe is really important. Part of the problem is that the entry bar is set extremely high because they have to go through the CAC training, Community Advisory Committee training through the Division of Aging and Adult Services. It's a twenty-hour program. I, I wish we could put some brain power on this to find a way, because I believe it becomes a hurdle that a lot of people don't get involved in. Yet, what we're dealing with is a, a serious issue. We need more eyes and ears, you know, and people visiting these facilities. And we can't get the people to sign up for these committees. So I, I just kind of throw that out there. I know there's a lot of eyes and ears in our own staff that are here. You know, throw me a lifeline, somebody, you know, on some way we can deal with this so we can attract more people. I know they're out there in the community. There's a bunch of people getting old in our community. I'm one of them. So we need to find a way to, to make it easier to participate on these committees. And I'll get off my soapbox. Yes.
I can address Commissioners Apple.
Please.
A lot of these requirements are required by the state. So that is where we get, so like for Mr. Sharp, if you notice, he's a little old. It's because he had to go through the training first. And the state had to approve him being appointed by the board. So part of the issue is the conditions around serving on these two committees. Is that the state law?
Yeah, and maybe the answer is at the state. But we need to do something.
Yes.
Just wanted to raise that issue.
Yep, thank you, sir.
You know, thank you, and thank you for that response. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir. Next is New Hanover County Non-County Agency Funding Committee.
Allison Linkler.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Last one, New Hanover County Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, one vacancy.
Donna Kuyaney.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And next, we have staff presentation on periodic inspections. Hans Schultz and Lisa Ward.
Good morning, how are you all?
Good.
So, first of all, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about our framework, framework for periodic inspections. Obviously, we started these conversations when there were several failures in buildings, historic structures primarily in the downtown area. Involved in this conversation of what the framework looks like, we've, we have our building inspector, our director, excuse me, Hans Schultz. We've also engaged our deputy county attorney, Kent Berpo, in the conversation as well, so that we have a, a good idea of what the framework needs to look like. We're not asking for a particular vote today. Really, what we're wanting to hear is if we are directionally right in the framework that we're going to present, and if you want us to continue exploring this program. This is going to be very high level. There are details to be worked out in the program. We wouldn't envision this coming into effect until fiscal year twenty-six, so July first of twenty twenty-five. So we would have more opportunities for discussion about the program during our budget process as well. So just to start out, this is the statute that gives us the authority to do the periodic inspections. And it does say that the department can inspect or do periodic inspections for unsafe, unsanitary, or hazardous or unlawful conditions within Planning and Development Regulation jurisdiction, which Hans will talk about in just a bit. As I mentioned, we've involved our legal department in the conversation, who have also contacted the UNC School of Government to make sure and give us some guidance on what that framework needs to look like. So there is statutory authority for us to do this. I'm going to turn it over to Hans to really go over what the framework looks like, and then some potential advantages and disadvantages of the program.
Thank you, Lisa. Good morning, Board. Hope I don't bore you a whole lot with what I have to say. Commissioners Apple, I'm getting old, too. So periodic inspections, a new, kind of a new endeavor we're considering on doing. You know, with all the buildings coming down downtown Wilmington, all the facades crumbling, I know City Wilmington is looking forward to have some buildings inspected, as are we. And I'm sure you all are, too. So the purpose of our proposed periodic inspection program is to confirm that the building or structure under consideration is safe for continued use under its present occupancy. Maintaining the structural integrity of the building throughout its service life is of paramount importance. Our periodic inspection program will require both the interior and exterior of the building to be maintained and in good repair and structurally sound and inspected so as we can provide no threat to the public health, safety, and welfare. So with this as an introduction, I'd like to go through a few considerations that Lisa and I talked about. She already told you our authority that allows us to inspect these buildings. I'd like to talk about some policy considerations, and then maybe some pros and cons is what we're trying to do. So what type of structures are we going to inspect? We have talked about residential and commercial. Inspecting residential would require many, many hoops we'd have to jump through. Residential has restrictions, requirements such as targeted and blighted areas, which you, the government board, would have to designate. We'd have to have specific complaints of a building. We'd have to know about the complaint. We'd have to have firsthand knowledge of it and reasonable cause. These are all considerations we really don't want to tackle at this point. Maybe sometime in the future as we continue this program, we could delve into residential. Right now, we're considering only going to commercial buildings. The age of the buildings that we're going to consider inspecting, we thought, let's look at buildings over a hundred years old. We had our tax department run a report, which detailed all the historic and older buildings in the county. And there are many of them. We looked at ones that are fifty years or older, seventy-five years or older, or even a hundred years or older. You know, the facades that came down recently in downtown? Every one of those buildings were a hundred years or older. They were built in eighteen oh five, eighteen oh six. So we felt that a hundred-year benchmark would be a good place to start. Once we continue this program, if it looks reasonable that we have to go a little bit younger than that, we certainly can adapt, you know. But if we start at looking at commercial buildings over a hundred years old, there are about four hundred that we have to look at. Also, we could entertain complaints. Right now, one of the buildings downtown where the roof collapsed, you know, because of all the water damage, that particular tenant complained several times to the owner. We never knew about it. If we have a program like this, you know, the public, tenants, owners, people can complain. They can come to the county and we can investigate them. So if we only look at buildings a hundred years or older, you know, four hundred of them, that doesn't mean that we can't look at some a little bit younger. If there's a complaint of a building that's fifty years old, we can surely look at that one, too. So how often should we inspect these buildings? We're thinking five years. We'll do our initial baseline inspection of all these four hundred and some buildings. Every five years after, we'll look at them again. Now, of course, that's going to be dependent on the use of the building. Certain uses may require more frequent inspections. Let's say you have a church with a thousand people in there. You know, our, our goal here is to maintain the public safety. If we have a thousand people going in here for an assembly occupancy, we probably want to inspect that more frequently. So we're thinking three years for those kind of occupancies. Where are we going to inspect? We'll do the unincorporated areas. We could do the beach communities. We could do City of Wilmington. Of course, we would need their board approval to do any of these. How are we going to go about doing this? We probably have to create a compliance division. This may require additional staff, it may not. We'd have to see how it goes at first. We certainly have capable inspectors that are knowledgeable to do this sort of thing. And we could actually begin doing this with current staff. And maybe in the future. Work it out a little bit more to see if we need, need more. Again, it would depend on the number of buildings we're looking at, the type of inspections, how many inspections, see what our staff could handle, and see if additional staff would be required. We would look at structural and electrical things in the building. And ideally, we'd use inspectors at a multi-trade. Inspectors that have a level-three electrical certificate and a, and a building certificate. So instead of sending two or three inspectors to one building, we could only send one guy. That would help a whole lot. Fees, we're hoping to perhaps establish fees that would cover the cost of the program. Of course, as Lisa said, a lot of this is very in its preliminary stages, and we really haven't gone into that a whole lot yet. Pros and cons. Talk about some advantages and disadvantages of a periodic inspection program. So advantages, we'd have increased general public safety by having code-compliant buildings. You know, the facades wouldn't come tumbling down. We'd have reduced non-residential or commercial content, uh, tenant complaints. As I said, the one building downtown, the tenant did complain often. It didn't go anywhere. If we have this program, we could certainly look into it, maybe address it. It would have reduced likelihood of condemnations in buildings. If we see an issue right now where a building needs to be condemned, because it's in disrepair, we'd have to go ahead and condemn it. If we have a program like this and we see issues that need to repair, you know, the owner, they can get repair permits and get a contractor and fix them. And we'd like to see the preservation of historic buildings and our cultural heritage. You know, City of Wilmington, you all, we all like these historic buildings downtown. We'd like to see them maintained. And that's a really a, a point for tourists to come here. And Wilmington is known for historic buildings, and we'd like to keep them up. Some disadvantages. There may be financial stress on the owners. If they do have to repair the buildings, you know, they're going to have to hire a contractor, pay permit fees, get inspections. Might be potential foreclosure of businesses. While the repair is going on, we may have to limit entry to the building. And again, we may have an increased need for compliance staff. And that'll be determined sometime in the future as we look at this a little bit further. The big one here could be increased liability to the county. So what we're planning to do is do visual inspections of these buildings inside and out. So our staff would go to a building, go inside, go outside, maybe look above their roof in the attic, in the basement. We wouldn't cut anything open, just do visual inspections of what we see. To give you an example, let's say we went down to one of these buildings downtown, looking at a facade. And our indication is that right now, at this inspection, it, it does not need any repair. You know, we're not going to say the building is safe, it's code-compliant. But what we see right now, it does not need repair. A month later, it comes, comes down. That could be a potential disadvantage for us and a county liability. Lot of points to consider. Certainly would entertain some questions, if you have any.
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Have we spoken with any of the property owners who might be impacted by this change as of yet to get their feedback on this line that we're pursuing?
No, sir, we have not yet.
I think that would be an important part of our overall analysis. We would want to have buy-in from the people that would most be impacted. In my estimation, my best guess, would be that a large number of them are just as desirous as we are of maintaining the public safety and the integrity of the buildings that they own. But it would be more of a successful proposition. And I guess let me phrase it by saying, I am in favor of pursuing this. I hope that we will continue on down this line. But I would like to get buy-in from the private property owners who would be impacted by this before we ultimately make our determination about how best to address this issue.
Yeah, very good point, and we'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
By the way, we do have buy-in from the City of Wilmington. They're really looking forward to us having to do something like this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hans, how about like New Hanover High School?
Yeah, I mean, that's a, that's an occupancy which probably would require more frequent inspections. Certainly look at that, you know, nursing homes, care facilities, that sort of thing.
Mr. Chairman, Hans, I, I'm thankful that we're going down this road. For me, I think it's long overdue. Several years ago, the Old Manor Movie Theater that I grew up with became a nightclub, a server nightclub, but the last one was the Muse. And I was contacted by the person renting that facility about major issues. And I got with Nicholas Guazepo, the then over-inspections. And he went down and, and found a number of violations and citations and, and pretty much closed it for a moment and gave the owner insight into what needed to be done. Well, that owner didn't do anything. He turned around and leased it to another individual who spent thousands and thousands of dollars trying to do things, only to find out that his money was wasted as the roof was leaking and there were numerous safety violations. And at the end, the building was torn down. It should have been torn down to begin with, had we had something like this in place, as that building was totally unsafe and could have harmed a whole lot of individuals that would go there to congregate for dancing and bands and whatnot. And, you know, again, looking at the number of facades that have fallen down in the last several months or the past year or so, to me, it's indicative of the fact that we need to have more inspections. And again, this building was downtown Wilmington. And although we have jurisdiction in some ways over the entire county, it's important to have those partnerships with places like City of Wilmington. You know, Carolina Beach has significant older buildings, even Royal Beach does, to make sure that folks that are going in and out are safe. And it may be a thing where the owner may not want that to happen. Because it is a financial liability for them to have to go in and maintain. The owner of that one building, the Old Manor, I mean, he fought tooth and nail not to do anything. But in the end, it was deemed that the building needed to come down. Now you've got a vacant lot there. But it was definitely in the best interest of our citizens here. And I think that's what we need to be looking at, as people are going in and out of buildings. You know, right down to the, you know, the carbonics, although that wasn't a hundred years old. You know, we had issues there with bricks falling off that could hurt someone. And definitely have to be mindful of the effects upon the public as we move forward. So I'm in, in agreement with moving forward with what you're doing.
Commissioner Barfield, very well said. I can't agree with you more. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Hans, first off, thank you and Lisa for picking up on this. And this was a, came from conversations that we had over a period. We picked it up and ran for it and have put together, I think, a long overdue plan. I think everybody on this commission would agree. And I want to lead the pack in saying, thank you, thank you. It is a serious public safety issue. It is a minor miracle that nobody has not been hurt in what has already happened in the downtown area. So you're being forward, you know, thinking this going, as we go forward, I think is really important. You're absolutely right, though, Hans. I love your analysis of the advantages and disadvantages. To me, the trickiest part is going to be the fees, which are going to be looked at. It's going to be a difficult conversation with some of the, the owners. But also from on our part, it's the inspector staffing. I appreciate, again, your sense of optimism that we can deal with this with existing staff. But I, I know enough that you already do an amazing job with limited resources and, and personnel. And to add another significant initiative like this on to your staff, I think you're being overly optimistic. And I hope that we'll consider some, some help. Because I think this kind of a program, as you said,
Because I think this kind of a program, as you said, once we get it stood up, is going to expand unnecessarily because it's, we're going to be finding a lot of things that we can, you know, stop from happening by jumping into this. I think the 400 buildings is just, I'd say, the tip of the iceberg, but I think there'll be plenty more once we start putting this eye on it. The other one, I think, and this is just me kind of putting builder hat on, is it's gonna be the electrical inspections, which are going to be really difficult, especially with the older buildings. And going back 100 years, most of them, we hope, have had electrical upgrades. But just going in and opening the panel up, yow! That's going to be difficult. And I share Commissioner Barfield's thought in, you know, in to kind of reach out to the owners, but I also would request that you reach out to the Wilmington Home Builders Association as well, who will, I'm sure, have, you know, strong feelings about this. And I think on the positive side, everybody wants to have a safe place and good gravy. Falling bricks or facades, we don't want, nor people going inside buildings that are unsafe. So, thank you again, and I know that the residential part, as you mentioned at the top of your presentation, is a whole nother hornet's nest to get in. I love it that we're moving forward aggressively, though, with the non-residential first. We will, at one point, get to residential for the safety of the public. Thank you for those kind words, Commissioner. By the way, as Lisa mentioned, we have plenty of time to look for help. You know, this program won't be going overnight, so we'll see how that develops. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, just a comment. I'm sure I'll have more questions as this goes along. Really, the first I've heard of it. And we certainly want the public to be safe, but it seems like it would be quite a bit on your department. Would this be annual inspections or every so many years? We already have complaint-driven inspections. I'd be curious how you would handle that scenario.
I think we plan on inspecting the initial 400 in the first two years and then five years after that.
Well, I guess we'll see how that unfolds and what you come back with and have some more questions on it.
Mr. Chair, if I just might add a couple more comments. My support certainly is for you to continue on the path of doing due diligence and analysis of the pluses and minuses that you've given us at that level. It may be that it doesn't make sense for us to make dramatic changes, and I hope that you will feel comfortable bringing back a recommendation if the analysis doesn't make sense, that it would not be prudent for the following reasons for us to do this. I, at least, I don't want to speak for anyone else. I am not giving you a directive from my position to make a particular decision or outcome. I want to understand, can we reasonably make a difference in enhancing the public safety? As a for instance, would we, with this system that we're proposing, have been able to make a difference in the two instances that occurred over the last six months? And perhaps not. And if so, we have to ask ourselves, is this a benefit of the county's time and treasure? And I hope that that will be included in some of what you do over the coming months.
Sure, well, thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
We have one speaker signed up to speak, Dawson Gage.
Thank you.
Mr. Gage, you've got three minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm Chair Rabinbark, members of the Board of Commissioners. It's a great honor and a pleasure to address you today. The subject which I wish to bring to your attention is something which I suspect you have all had occasion to think about because it has been in the center of a public concern, although not necessarily directly. But the debates about the organization known as Port City United and debates about criminal justice in this county have all included the matter of the so-called GPS ankle monitor. I am here to raise a note of doubt and a note of skepticism as to the lawfulness of this practice and remind you that the county and the Board of Commissioners does have several kinds of authority over the use of this device, the GPS monitor device, for those who have yet to be convicted of crime. In North Carolina, the devices are used for several purposes. They're used for people that are, that have been convicted of serious tax offenses. They are used for people on probation and post-release supervision. But they're also used for people who have only been charged with crime, which raises the question about the presumption of innocence and also the rights of people who have been merely charged with crime, you know, to, you know, to privacy, autonomy. You know, it may not seem that oppressive to those who've never experienced it, but as somebody who has worn one of these devices, I can say that the all-seeing eye of the state, it does, it causes terrible harm to the physical and mental health. And so, I do not think that's an administrative practice. I think I could do no more than say that I trust in the wisdom and in the civic spirit and in the decency of the members of this board and ask that going forward in the coming weeks and months, that the practices of the so-called pre-travelled access be inquired into. As to, you know, one important mystery is whether the data from the ankle monitor goes to various organizations or law enforcement organizations in Raleigh. I was told on the authority of Myron Irving of the Wilmington Police Department that they do, the WPD, they do have the data. I'm not sure if the Sheriff's does. But there are serious issues of constitutional law and serious issues of human rights. When I was born in New Hanover County, this practice, these devices did not exist. And you all can remember from back, I do. And so, I would question whether we are altogether wiser or more or more conscious about such matters of public safety, criminal law, than our predecessors. And I look forward to the day, perhaps, when this device will no longer be imposed on the citizens of New Hanover County. I'm happy to take any questions or otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you, sir. Pleasure. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief. Happy to report, it's five weeks to the day. Editorial comment, too long in my opinion. But nonetheless, a disaster assistance center is opening up for our community, most specifically those that were harmed by potential tropical storm number eight in Carolina, and Curie Beach is where there is now federal assistance available as well as state assistance and personal interaction opportunity at Carolina Beach Recreation Center that should open up at 11 o'clock this morning. It will run for the next several weeks. And so, we're happy and pleased that ultimately that assistance came through, and I thank the Commission for your advocacy and leadership in pushing that issue forward. So, there is federal and state assistance available.
Does that cover Southport also?
I cannot speak to that, sir.
Mr. Chair, if I might. Mr. Manager, thank you. You have been extremely vigilant over these last several weeks in continually following up on this. It would have been very easy, particularly in light of the horrible events out in the western part of the state, to allow what happened to our community to sort of get left behind, not in any kind of ugly fashion just because there were big messy things that happened elsewhere. But you were diligent, you stayed on it, and this is a very good report to bring to us.
I'll echo those comments. Thank you for pursuing that. You know, it's interesting to me that a no-name storm could have been one of the biggest catastrophes since, for us here in New Hanover County. So, we certainly have to be aware at all times and, but thank you for getting that help out to the folks. And I'm sure they're aware that it's coming their way better late than ever. So, thank you.
Mr. Chair, Chris, in answer to the Chair's question earlier about Southport, is my understanding this would cover Brunswick and New Hanover Counties, right?
Well, I would hesitate to say what assistance is available for where and for whom. I can only speak to what's been authorized for New Hanover County, which is New Hanover County Small Business Administration Assistance and State Type 1 Disaster Assistance, in that we do have an office. I cannot speak to what's happening in Brunswick.
But this would cover Carolina Beach, Curie Beach, and the City of Wilmington and unincorporated portions of New Hanover County.
Anyone in New Hanover County is eligible to make application for SBA assistance or State Type 1 Disaster Assistance. That does not at all mean that someone who was not harmed would be awarded assistance, but open to the residents of New Hanover County.
Thank you, and thank you for your efforts in tracking this. I really appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, just want to commend the staff of the Board of Elections and our county team for their assistance of. Our staff have definitely been overwhelmed with the amount of voters that have been voting in this election. I know the Senior Resource Center, I think we had a staff person that got hit by a car. It's a very tight situation to get in and get out. There's really one road. When you break it down, when you've got early voters that are doing curbside voting, taking up one lane, and there's no way for folks to get in or get out. And I found myself doing something that probably bothered Assistant County Manager Bradley as I was going down the wrong way, trying to get in. And it'd be great if we could find a way to create greater access to that facility, number one, and maybe get some additional land that would, as I looked, it's just a creek that kind of borders a property with the football field at Hockford High School, but finding a way to get another access, whether it's off of College Road or Shipyard or something, that would give better ingress and egress to that property. But also the Northeast Library, as well, I know they've been overwhelmed. I did not anticipate this type of a turnout. I think it's the biggest turnout since, I think, we started early voting in 2008. But I know that our state has been on radar as being one of the highest-voting states in the country as well. So, I want to commend Ray Hunter and her staff and all the volunteers and folks that are doing that work. Ms. Bradley in particular, she was out there on the weekend. I asked her, was she getting overtime pay? And she just kind of smiled and said, I get paid every two weeks. This is what I was here to do. So, again, thank you for your team.
Mr. Chair, I do have a matter that I would like to discuss, ask some questions about. I saw an article in the Greater Wilmington Journal, and I had three different citizens reach out to me to ask questions about a proposed project, 3990 Independence Boulevard. Understand that it's before the City of Wilmington's Planning Board. It will go to the City of Wilmington. Apparently, we own 2/3 of it. Some other folks own 1/3 of it. Can you please give a brief historical sketch of this project? What role we're playing in it, how we got to the point that we're at, sir? Because I think that there are people who want to know, and I would appreciate us putting some light on it.
Yes, sir. I will do my best to pack about 20 years of history, which much of this predates even my time working in New Hanover County. Where we are today, I should be noted, is at a court order direction. Everything that's been done along the way. So, the application that is before the city is effectively directed or incented by a court to go through a rezoning to potentially purchase the property, primarily so that the heirs, which own 1/3 of the track, can receive their proceeds. So, the history begins in about 2004, when Flossie Bryan passed and willed approximately 40 acres of land to the county off Independence Boulevard. Her vision for that was that the county would establish a park. The heirs of Ms. Bryan challenged the, I hate to say this, but I think the word I keep reading is the competence of that decision. And the county ultimately, in 2006, I believe, reached an agreement through the court and the heirs, that the county would own 2/3 of the track. The heirs would own 1/3 and the requirement that the county put a rezoning to the highest and best use, which is in fact residential, and a minimum purchase price that I believe at the time was $8 million, plus or minus. Again, this all predates my time in service. The economy was in a very different place. Also, there became the discussion of the Cape Fear Skyway actually took what would've been the track itself. The county had no interest in pursuing the rezoning because the indication was it would likely not be approved. The court required a rezoning and the sale of the property. Fast forward a multitude of years, the heirs became more interested and emphatic, if you will, that they are entitled to the 1/3 share of value of land. Again, a rezoning was a requirement of the court order. It is zoned industrial business. Effectively, it is not zoned residential, but the court order was redirect to highest and best use. The decision was that it would be residential. The, in the time that I've been here, we briefed the board candidly, always in closed session because there is a legal matter about, because the question would come, what are we going to do? We need to do something with the Bryan track. And then, we get into the details of where we are by what we can or cannot do. In 2020 or '22, time begins to run together. The county began to explore a little more interest in disposing of it for housing because of the affordable housing crunch. It was 40 acres within the city limits. But the County Commission, number one, could not just give the heirs their third value. It could've been, at that point in time, $12 million of value. And so, the board asked that the county go back to the court because the heirs had been before this board, actually in the public setting, saying, hey, we would like our share of the property. Understand that. The board made the decision in 2022, I believe, to go back to the court and ask for some modifications to the court order that would effectively allow an upset bid that the court would manage and oversee. And that the winner in the upset bid would go before the city council to have the property rezoned before they close on the property to make sure that in fact they can proceed with the highest and best use. And so, here we are, nearly 20 years removed from the original willing of the property, several years removed from the last court action to not undo the court order, but to make modifications that still gives the heirs its property, that requires the rezoning and the development for it to proceed. And so, that is my best layperson's summary. I know there's concern that the property is identified as owned by the county. Fair concern, criticism. We are, we are actually 2/3 of the owner. And what is happening is consistent with a court order that goes back to approximately 2006, modified in 2002, that allowed for the upset bid and the rezoning before the actual transaction of the property itself.
That's very helpful, and I understand that there may be some complicated legal analysis that's at play here. Let's minimize it to, at present, a court order is directing us to follow this path to request rezoning of the City of Wilmington. I don't want to presuppose anything, but let's say the City of Wilmington doesn't allow that rezone. Might we have the opportunity to reconsider what has been talked about before, buy out the remaining share, and potentially turn this property into a park? Is that a possibility?
As, I'm not a lawyer. I should defer to your lawyer, but I believe that would also take another modification of the court order.
But ultimately, at this point, it hinges and turns on what the City of Wilmington decides to do with this rezone that's kind of before it.
I believe, yes, sir. Theoretically, it's always been contingent upon the requirement to go through a rezoning.
I'm just calling this out loud because we just had a joint meeting with our planning board, and we talked about the possibility of expanding green space throughout our community. And it may be too late with this particular parcel, but should it rear its head again, that we have an opportunity to reevaluate what we do with it, I hope that we would consider pursuit of green space.
So, if I might make a comment before we have any more conversation. I'm not a lawyer either, but I know we should be very careful about what we say that might influence the City Council of Wilmington. influence the City Council of Wilmington with this potential rezoning.
There are big boys and girls. They can hear whatever I have to say about something. I don't know anything in any way.
No, I understand, but I think it's, I would defer to our legal counsel to chime in at any time, but I would be concerned how we might influence their decisions on our discussions.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I just want to compliment again our county manager. That was an amazing feat, that you just crammed in 20 years of that history, of some of which I've been read into in my 10 years as a commissioner, and to spontaneously be able to put that together and pull those facts together, that was amazing, Chris, and spot on. The only thing I'd add to it, the other wrinkle in it, of the many wrinkles, is which one-third of the acreage would, that the heirs would claim? Because the property has, probably a majority of it is wetlands. And so which third is connected to the value of the heirs felt they should receive? It is an incredibly complex and winding road that has led to us. I know Wanda, our former attorney, spent hundreds, maybe 1,000 hours on this. It was incredibly complex.
One of the things I should have noted, that there have been at least two formal appraisals of the property that the county paid for, that established the first floor. So that it was 8 million, is what memory tells me, so they would have received one-third of the 8 million, which was known to be the fact that the track is divided by Independence Boulevard. You may know that, that part of it's on the right, part of it's on the left, very small portion on the left. And a bit of wetlands as well. The second appraisal, which was done, actually, there were three appraisals. There was an appraisal done at and around the time of the Cape Fear Skyway, and then most recently in 2022, when this new court order was established, that also set a value on it that I believe was $12 million. And then the court allowed from that point, so there have been three appraisals, the upset bid. So to the point you're raising, sir, all of those factors have been put into the appraisals, and they are entitled to their one-third of the overall share. And as it proceeds now, neither the heirs or the county would have title to the property. It would be held by a new company. And there were multiple bids, I should say that, that were put into the court a couple of years ago when this process started. So theoretically, that developer will own the property if it is successful in securing the rezone. If not, then we are back to where we've been, which is a property that is owned by the heirs and the county, two-thirds and one-third respectively, that does have a minimum value attached to it.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know what we would do with it if we did own it, you know, recognizing the fact that we, with the city, bought Echo Farms and turned that into a really great park property with pool and tennis courts. But I tell you, I was at the Early Orchard Roast Friday night, and I was just looking around thinking, wow, had the county not bought this, what would it be? And what a great gem it is, and just being able to imagine the possibilities about what could be, you know, whether we, I just couldn't imagine Early Gardens not being there. And I know that the commissioners took considerable heat when they spent $10 million to buy that property. But I said it publicly, that if we tried to sell that property now, we'd probably be on the firing line, you know, in this community, because it is a tremendous gem in our community. And, you know, maintaining those kind of things and having those opportunities. But again, I don't know what we would do, other than maintain it the way that it is. I wouldn't see putting another park that close to...